Okay, we're gonna bring this meeting to order of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. We met in closed session at 8:30. 1A update was given. 2A update was also given. 3A claim was denied. 1A addendum was turned to 3B and direction to staff was given. Our confidential minutes were approved. If you wouldn't mind standing and doing a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report recommendations for possible action at subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three-minute time limit. Morning, Bill. He is on vacation, thank you for reminding me. Supervisor Axe is on vacation and he will not be attending the meeting. This was a planned event.
This shouldn't take too, shouldn't take too long since I've, I emailed over the weekend you, my comments that I was planning to make under public comment. Let me first start though by drawing your attention to a letter to the editor from last Friday called "County Roads Are Maddening", by Andy Asarito. Andy, I don't know if you're listening on or not. It says, "Once again, millions of dollars, of millions of dollars of damage has occurred to our roads during this last series of storms. Most of this damage was caused by the simple lack of a comprehensive road maintenance program. It is criminal," note criminal, "that the Amador County Board of Supervisors has let our roads fall into such disrepair. When will the madness stop?" On March 14th, I made several comments relative to roads. I just distributed a questionnaire to the board that requested their response to their take on the condition of the roads. I think for those who responded, all of them agreed that many of the county roads are in disrepair and need rehabilitating. I think most of you agreed that some of the roads are unsafe and are dangerous for youth, for individuals to drive on. My nephew by marriage lives up in the Shenandoah Valley area and he says it is, he's confounded that there are not more accidents that occur up there because of the condition of those roads. I have asked the board previously, are you gonna apply for the Safe Roads and Streets Act of 2021?
Bill, may I interrupt you right here at this, at that juncture?
Yeah.
Now, I answered you back on that one. That email on the safer and safer roads. Now, that grant does not apply to putting any material on the ground. It is just for planning. It is planning for stoplights, guardrails, anything else is just part of the planning portion of it, but not putting material on the ground to make the roads safer.
Jeff, that's what you say. We don't know that that's true unless we talk.
Right off the website, right off the website. I ran through it as soon as you emailed it to me.
Okay, with, we can debate that, but no point in wasting any more of your time. Really gets down to though, are you going to have a public hearing so that your constituents can address their issues and concerns and you can answer their questions? Why will you not hold a public meeting? The, as I pointed out before, there's a lot of interest in knowing what's going on. The board says you need a half-cent sales tax devoted to repair, replacement, resurfacing roads. Okay, a public, at a public meeting, you could hear your constituents respond to see if they are interested in having a half-cent sales tax. It's beyond me why you wouldn't do it, why you wouldn't hold a public meeting. The...
Again, this is a public meeting right here. What you're doing right now, exactly, but hold on, but what it is, now, we had, we put out for a vote, a $1 increase to everybody's registration of their vehicles. We put it out to vote and everybody denied it. Then we had another vote, which a school district was asking to help their increase. So we've gotten kind of the answer back from our constituents of how they're wanting. It's too much taxes, we get that.
That's what you say, I don't believe it. I just frankly don't believe it. If that's true, it wouldn't do any harm to have a public meeting. You could notice it, much like you're, you notice the meetings for the Planning Commission. It lists what the items are, it gives a time, place, and certain for you to, for the public to show up and participate. You could also publish it in the Mountain Mergent and in the Ledger Dispatch. What have you got to lose? Put it on the public meeting.
What would it do? What would, what would the public, you know, we're not in a Crystal Palace here.
Jeff, you know, one thing I would say, I would, I would consider Mr. May's request. Is it redundant? Probably, but if you put a public hearing out there, it might get a little, a little more notice from the public, because a lot of times people don't always know. I mean, before I got in government, a lot of times you don't know a lot about how government functions and it probably, it wouldn't hurt anything to do.
I know, I'm fine with that. You know, I, you know, I want to get out to the public to knowledge that 62% of your property taxes go straight to the schools. You know that, right? And then 64% goes to law enforcement of our general funds.
And I will, I will say this as far as Mr. Azzaretto. Is he right in a lot of what he says? Absolutely. But I also did bring up a substantial increase an elected official got, and he didn't want to hear about that, but there's only so much money in that pot. It's that simple. And I invited Andy on, online, probably four different times. We got a Public Works Committee meeting, let me know, I'll get you that date, love to have you come and see the numbers, see what's going on. All he says, "I want my damn roads fixed," which I don't blame him, but I'm saying, "Come to the meeting, let's talk about it." He won't, he won't even come to the meeting, so.
Okay. All I'm saying is, how's it going to hurt you to have a public meeting? If nobody shows up, you know they don't care. But if they show up, you can address their issues and concerns and answer their questions and explain why you need a half-cent sales, sales tax. They might agree.
No, I, I agree with Bill saying about having a meeting. I think we know the problems of the roads, I think most, a lot of people do, but just, it probably wouldn't be a fun meeting, but it might, there might be some good come out of it.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. If nobody calls, shows up, you know nobody cares.
Okay, anybody else?
Good morning.
Morning.
Virginia Manor. I'm speaking as a taxpayer as well as president of the Jackson Creek Homeowners Association, but first I'd like to comment just briefly on Mr. May. I do agree that perhaps a public meeting, but from the ones I've gone to before, you know, there shows very little interest, even when it's been held in the evening. But I found at the Commission on Aging meeting this last month, Supervisor Brown explained to all these aging people, you know, who are concerned about many of the same issues, how much money it actually cost even to fix a pothole, let alone a road. And I, I found it very informative and really shocking, just to fix a pothole, let alone a road. Now, I would assume that the county, there was a lot of damage, additional damage to roads as a result of the floods. I would assume that when asking FEMA for monies for help in this county, that that included repair of roads too. I'm assuming that, I don't know, I haven't seen your wish list. That's just my comment on that. So, thank you Supervisor Brown for explaining it so well to the Commission on Aging. As far as Jackson Creek Homeowners Association, I'm speaking for many of the seniors on fixed incomes. I'm wondering if it's at all possible, because we've had a delay in our income tax state and federal, if it's possible for those that were affected by flood to make application or something where perhaps our property tax could be without penalty delayed for, say, a period of three months, two months, three months, just to kind of help get people over this hump of continued repairs on their own property. It's just a thought, I'm not asking you to take action, but that would be another helping hand, not saying, you know, we want six months out or anything else, it's just a helping hand to those who owned homes that were affected. And for us, it was gravely affected. So, just something to talk about. So, thank you and we really appreciate the Disaster Center being here. They've been very, very helpful and I encourage anybody to still go there, they're supposed to be there till Thursday, but there's a wealth of information upstairs and downstairs and they've all been wonderful. So, thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you, Virginia. Anybody else in the public? Morning.
Hi, Marcia Uranda, and I'd like to speak on the issue of the possibility of William Stevenson convicted.
We've got a...
Do we go in order here?
Yes, so we're gonna, we've got that, that's an agendaized item.
First time here.
Not a problem, not a problem. Thank you for coming up. Anybody else that is not on the agenda? Okay. Oh, sorry, I looked down.
And that lady proved my point about people don't always understand the process.
Yeah, and that's so true.
Yes, Larry Duklos, Just Concerned Citizen. So I take it from the response to that former lady that because this individual is on the...
On the agenda.
On the agenda for discussion, that it's pointless for me to ask questions.
Right, you know, we, we ask you to wait until that agendaized item to come.
Unless you have, unless you have a time reason you have to leave or something like that, you wait for that item and then we'll come up.
Okay, all right.
Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we do have someone. Go ahead Catherine, whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Catherine Ebbett, volcano area resident. I just wanted to comment on the recommendation to hold a meeting about the roads. I probably have been to more public meetings than nearly anybody in Amador County, and I would say the one meeting that I saw that got the largest participation was one held on a Saturday, and it was a well-facilitated workshop that had to with the agricultural element of the general plan. So my suggestion would be that if you do want to do a workshop on roads, you do it in a workshop format, you work with the Amador County Transportation Commit, Commission, and really explain the situation with the roads, the funding and the options, so that people can better understand the issues and, and, you know, maybe help you with your decision process about how to move forward. The idea of a sales tax is nothing new, there was an ACTC committee that worked on it years ago and it was stopped for various reasons, but there aren't a lot of other options out there. So perhaps if you did have a public workshop that was well-announced, well-publicized, and well-organized, where people felt free to comment and talk, and it was a little bit less structured than some of your meetings, it might be really productive and people would, would feel heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Looking for an approval of the agenda?
I'll move second.
Okay.
And if you have, if I have a, I wonder, why don't we for consent, we're fine. I'd like one item in the consent agenda polled for a separate vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What item are you looking for?
6C, it's administrative agency, adoption of ordinance-amending sections, yada, 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 rates elected, salaries elected officials.
Okay, we'll poll 6C. And we'll vote on that right now, voting on, do I have a motion to approve 6C?
Well, the motion to approve the rest of the...
Oh, summary.
I would move to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll go to 6C.
Yeah, the reason I asked to have it polled is, I think, I, I'm not against the COLAs for elected officials, I understand there's a lot of inflation, that's fine with that, I just didn't like the amount of additional increase that went towards Gary Redden this year, if I thought it was, it was too much. Because I mean, you figure the salary he makes is like total loaded cost, the county's $333,000 in some sense. I thought that was enough, I didn't see a 7% increase on top of COLAs as being necessary, so that's why I asked to poll it, I'm gonna vote no, time for the vote.
Move to approve 6C.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. 3-1. 3-1-1. Okay. Onto 5A, Child Abuse Prevention Council Discussion and Possible Action Relative to Adoption and Presentation Resolution Proclaiming the Month of April as Child Care Abuse Prevention Month. And staff will be, let's see, excuse me, my mouth is not working correctly this morning. CAPC staff will also provide an updating regarding activities that will take place during the month.
Good morning.
Morning.
Nina Machado, I'm the Executive Director with First Five Amador, and we also oversee the Child Abuse Prevention Council for the county. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
So yes, activities that we will have, actually, you know, we're looking at kind of changing it from Child Abuse Prevention, Prevention Month to Child Abuse Awareness Month, because every month should be a prevention month for child abuse. We know that it's much more prevalent than what's even reported. We do have statistics that I can share with you, but thought that I would actually turn to the activities that we are going to do as well and try and keep it on a more positive light. You know, there were 686 allegations last, last year and 42 were substantiated, some were inconclusive, some of the calls were, as they call, they say they were referred out to provide families with support, to perhaps keep them from entering the system of child welfare. We'd like, just like our probation department, for them to be bored, but instead they're very busy. So we are looking for prevention activities, First Five, a lot of the organizations who are actually here, looking for prevention, let's see, ideas for strengthening families in the community, providing them with support so that they can actually help their children flourish. There's actually a campaign that I'm interested in bringing back, it's called Catch 'Em Being Good, instead of the negative. Children hear probably 10 negative comments to every positive comment throughout the day, so a Catch 'Em Being Good, so that you can actually encourage children's, acknowledge their, their good behavior and have the parents and caregivers help support the, their child development in early years. So, one of the campaigns I wanted to mention to you that I think is really important that we've started to get out there, we've shared with a lot of our partner organizations, is Does Your Child Know the Difference? And has to do with marijuana-infused edibles. They look very appealing to children, they're around the homes, that, pets are also finding these and ending up in emergency rooms as well. So, a really important educational component for families out there. Also, Period of Purple Crying, we've done for several years. What it does is encourage families to find a safe place to place their children, should they be unable to console the child when they're crying. There's actually a period of time between like two and six months where it, sometimes children will cry even if they're fed and dry and you can't console them, and that's when some child abuse does occur. So we have the Period of Purple Crying is what it's called, because it kind of turns purple when they're crying that hard. We have community members who have been fabulous in crocheting and knitting caps that have purple in them, and we distribute them as a reminder to parents that it's not unusual for that to happen. Put them in a safe place, walk away, catch your breath, and then reengage with the child. And then another that we have is, we know that childcare can be very challenging for families to find, especially off-hour childcare and care for infants and toddlers. So we have a campaign that's called Are They Up to the Task? So is the person that you are leaving your child with up to the task of taking care of that child? Are they familiar with what is typical child development? You can't expect a two-year-old to sit somewhere for 45 minutes patiently, not going to happen. On the back of it, we have as emergency number form that parents can place on the refrigerator, whatever, so that someone knows when they're caring for the child, who they should contact. We will, I did place the little blue pinwheels in front of you in case you lost your pin from last year. And these pinwheels, which it, it represents a happy childhood, will be placed, Pinwheel Gardens will be placed around the county again. Thank you, we have had one out in front of this building now for several years and we'll do the same. And then we'll have them at other, other locations as well, and we will have the, a large banner acknowledging Child Abuse and Prevention Awareness Month across Jackson Main Street again. So we thank you for your support, the community through the campaign that people can donate when they receive their property taxes, there's a separate form in there, it goes to some of the activities that the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Campaigns provide, and people can make that donation when they see their property tax envelope come through, should they choose to do so.
Well, I thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution and we'll vote on it. Resolution proclaiming the month of April as Amador County Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas any child deserves to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to ensure that they reach their full potential, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requiring input and action from everyone, and whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological and emotional and physical effects... And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological and emotional and physical effects that have lasting consequences for the victim of abuse. And whereas our children are their most valuable resource and will shape the future of Amador County. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk of, promote the social and emotional and development well-being of children. And whereas affected children abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnership between the child welfare professionals, education, health community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities may make every effort to promote programs, activities, and policies that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and the families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense of our children and families. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Amador County, State of California, that the board does hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child County, excuse me, Amador County Child Abuse Prevention Month. And urge all citizens to use this time to reaffirm our dedication to preventing child abuse and neglect and protecting our community's children.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody else want to come forward on this?
And I think it's important, I think we all can remember that one person. It only takes one person to make a difference, um, in a child's life. Can be an adult, a parent, could be a teacher, could be a coach, uh, one person. Um, so you could be the one.
I could totally agree. So do I have a motion?
I would move. Approval, pass the resolution.
Okay, do I have a second?
I guess I'll be the second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will say Nina, um, children and puppies and kitties and are all in a special category in my heart. They're all innocent. And thank you for your work.
Nina, do you want to introduce our new staff before you sit down? You need a mic.
So we actually have, um, a change in, um, some of our staff. We had Tracy Carlton worked with us for more than 20 years and has decided to go out and pursue her art, which is just wonderful, and we wish her all the best. She provided a lot of talent in our, in our, um, organization. And now we have Rachel Marie, who will be handling our fiscal management. So you guys will see Rachel around the, um, around the office, so. Welcome, Rachel. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to five B now. Discussion and Possible Action Relative to an Update by George. I never get your name.
Don't worry, you can call me. Just refer to me as Mr. K. How's that?
Mr. K.
That's why I remember that, yeah.
All right, so, uh, I want to just thank everybody for the opportunity to come and speak. Honorable Amador County Board of Supervisors, uh, Chair Jeff Brown, Patrick Crewe, Richard Forster, Brian Onato, and of course Frank Axe, who's not here. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. I do want to share some information with you guys, and I do appreciate the kind words from the audience about the Disaster Resource Center. And I also want to humbly apologize to all the wonderful community outreach, uh, organizations that have been getting emails from me about it once a week. I do appreciate your patience with that. I'm just trying to get the word out to let people know that we do have the Disaster Resource Center open. I want to just update you a little bit, but first, I am a Public Information Officer for the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And, uh, as of yesterday, we had 65 applications in Amador County. Seventeen have been approved and about $551,000 in benefits have been, uh, uh, put, set aside through the process. I will explain to folks that, uh, the business applications, if you've got a, a business that's had some physical damage, it's a little more complicated, requires a little more past year tax returns, those kinds of things. So we ask those that have applied to be patient with us. I also want to announce that, um, at the end of this week, the Disaster Resource Center, as a resource center, is closing and the SBA is turning into a disaster loan outreach center for the next couple of weeks. And you're asking, what is that? Well, people are starting to get letters now in the community. And in the classic government oxymoron, it looks like a denial letter. So I ask people to be patient, bring those letters into the center and we can explain. It could be something as missing as a digit in a social security number. It could be, uh, the wrong page was copied in a tax form, those kinds of things. So please be patient, uh, don't take that as a denial, come in and find out what's going on. Also, I want to, uh, just as a matter of business, remind folks that, um, Friday is a holiday in the state. So state services that are on this floor right around the corner from us right now are, are here until Thursday. And I want to remind folks that the, because this has been a declared disaster county, um, many of the state agencies are waiving fees. So for example, if you're renewing your, uh, you know, your car registration here in Amador County, you won't be paying fees for that. So I just wanted to just let people know there's about nine or 10 state agencies. Now, I represent.
Question on that.
Sure.
They're not waiving the fees or just delaying them, right?
Um, I believe that they are waiving them, but you'd have to ask and find out. I just know that they, that they are accommodating, like the young lady earlier that asked about maybe pushing off the property tax date, those kinds of things. That could be that kind of a thing. I would certainly encourage you to ask. Um, I'm just doing it as a courtesy because they don't have a, OES doesn't have a Public Information Officer down here, and I told them I would mention that they're down there. So, uh, the, we are here as a result of the major disaster declaration of January 14th. We did have a, uh, deadline of, um, of March 17th initially, and then there was a grace period extended. So we're in this grace period now, which is going to end on the 31st. What the grace period means is that we know that some parts of the county had some pretty significant damages with storms number two and three, and it's, it's been difficult for people to come down. Um, and I do need to make folks aware that we are, uh, uh, accepting, uh, applications for the loans related to storm number one, which is between December 27th and early January. My understanding is OES is speaking to FEMA about expanding the declarations for storm number two and three. Cause I know in the, um, Mr. Chairman Brown, in your district in Shake Ridge Road, there's a lot of damage, trees down. So we're waiting to hear on that. So the, the, the Disaster Recovery Center, which is going to be a loan outreach center come this Friday, is going to stay open until about April 13th. And then if there's community need to be on that, we'll extend those dates. When I, when I say a primary designated county, is that our federal program provides low interest federal disaster loans to assist businesses and residents that may not be insured or may be underinsured as a result of the severe winter storms. So, uh, we encourage any resident that hasn't followed through on their application or hasn't come in to please come into the county center here at 810 Court Street and find out what resources available for not only the Small Business Administration and FEMA. And I do also want to clarify that SBA, uh, you apply for low interest loans. FEMA does grants. So those are, those grants you don't have to pay back. So there's kind of two, two different paths you can follow. You can fol- you can walk on both paths, but there's also offshoots if you need other, other, uh, resources. So the benefits are this, uh, for individuals and families, that includes up to $200,000 to repair or replace real estate for homeowners, and both homeowners and renters have up to $40,000 available in loans to replace personal property. For businesses, which includes nonprofit organizations, property damage of up to 200, $2 million is available to repair, replace real estate, machinery and equipment inventory, and other assets that were damaged or destroyed. Now, there's another deadline that people are going to start getting emails about, not necessarily the physical damage, folks. It's called the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. And that's, um, for, if your business has been impaired, you've lost business, you've lost customer base, having a hard, hard time making payroll, that's what that loan is for. And that deadline is much, much later. It's October 16th. So those businesses have until the 16th of October to do that. The interest rates for the loans are 2.313% for homeowners and renters, 2.375% for private nonprofit corporations, and 3.305% for businesses with terms up to 30 years. The loan amounts and terms are set by the SBA and are based on each applicant's financial condition. I also want to, um, make sure that people are familiar with the, that when they do come down or if they go online, you need to register with FEMA first. Presidential declarations are set up that way. We have something called Agency Declarations where you can go direct SBA. So that website is wwwdisasterassistance.gov. There's also an 800 number, which is 1-800-621-3362. So I've thrown a lot of information out at you folks and the public, and I'm ready to answer any questions.
Anything from the board?
You know, some of that information you gave earlier, um, could you send a memo out? Like as far as, as far as like when people, they're not being denied, just like you said, there might be something missing, a, a digit in the social security number.
Right.
Something we can just maybe put, post online somewhere for people?
Uh, well, they, they are getting those letters in the mail.
They're getting them personally, yeah.
Yeah, and so that, so that, you know, we can disclose that. I mean, that would be a violation for us to do that, but the.
That wasn't what I meant, what I meant.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
In the letters they're getting, is that information being made clear to them? Or just, or just like, your application is denied?
The first paragraph will say that, and then the second paragraph will give the reason why. Sometimes people don't get past the first paragraph, unfortunately, and it's, I'm, I'm, I'm feel, feel bad. I wish I could change that. That's something that's set, um, I guess at a higher level, so. But there is always some confusion about that, and, um, I can tell you, I was in San Luis Obispo County for about five weeks before I came here to Amador. And by the time of my term, I was getting a lot of calls, people were confused. And luckily we, and they still have the Disaster Loan Outreach Center open there, believe it or not. They're answering those kinds of questions. And I do want to say that I believe that when the Disaster Loan Outreach Center starts late Friday, next Monday, it's going to just be the Small Business Administration. I don't know if the FEMA folks are going to be there, but for sure, we're going to be there.
Anybody from the public? Come on forward, Virginia.
Okay, come on.
We got a lot of people on Zoom that can't hear you from back there.
I was, thank you. I was just going to ask, and where will that be? Will it be in the county building here still?
I'm sorry, I should have clarified. Yes, in the same location that we're at right now, which is directly upstairs.
Yes, okay. Just want a clarification, and the hours will be?
The hours are going to be the same, about eight to five, Monday through Saturday. We're closed Sunday.
Okay.
And I will be sending out emails, and once again, I, I really appreciate everybody's patience because you're probably getting inundated by an email by, by me at least once a week with a ton of information. But we just want to make sure that we're reaching out. Oh, and I also want to let folks know that the folks at Western Title have been amazing in terms of assisting me, in terms of the mobile home parks, uh, the various community, uh, centers and, uh, the HOAs. It's been really, I've been, I've actually heard that they appreciate the information. Sometimes the number, phone numbers changes and the people change, the presidents change. And I do apologize for those who are getting emails that we're no longer the president, so.
Okay. And my other quick comment, which, um, because our association was looking at an SBA loan, is that, that, um, because this has been, the area's effect have been declared flood plains, known flood plains, that, uh, you will be required to carry, uh, flood insurance, and it goes along with the title for as long as that structure remains. So once you have that designation or, and, or you take the money, you will be required. And that can be privately very expensive. I know for our association, it was $58,000 was one of our quotes. Well, that's more than we, you know, have in our state reserve, let alone affordability of it. So they do give you a long list of agencies that you can, or insurance companies you can go to, to do comparative bids. And that was just something that we kind of stumbled upon. And it can make a difference to a homeowner or to an association or business as to whether or not they can actually afford that policy, even though some of the initial underwriting for the first two or three years may come from FEMA, you still are required. And it's, to be in a fire zone as well as now a flood zone, it's very difficult. So, and hard to find any kind of insurance. So just wanted to note that, that maybe other people aren't aware. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you so much. And also, uh, Supervisor Brown is familiar with the situation. We do have some disputes between insurance companies and property owners. I do want to remind folks that there are ombudsmen, um, not only in the organizations, typically in the, um, insurance company, companies, but also the State Department of Insurance does have an ombudsman that can intervene and, uh, take the case and look at that. And they, actually, Department of Insurance is in this building. So if people have concerns, um, I certainly encourage you to come and chat with them and, and explain. Because, um, like I said, it, it's, sometimes it's a very fine line in terms of what's covered and what's not covered. And the SBA does not actually get involved in those situations, but we do require insurance because this is a, this is a loan. This is, when you get, another thing I wanted to let you know with the SBA, if you do apply and you are, you know, enrolled and you're given an opportunity to take a loan, you do not have to take that loan. It's kind of like being pre-approved for a mortgage. It's just an opportunity to find out what's available.
Well, I thank you, George, and everything you've been doing for us and all the information you've been giving to us has been very much appreciated. And we've, uh, it's been an interesting couple of months, you know, of everything we've been going through.
No, it has, and, um, I think I've expressed this to, to Chair Brown and others. You know, I've, uh, this county means a lot to me. I've got family members that live here. And, um, I come here and, um, visit quite a bit. I love the, the, not only the wine industry, but the walnut industry. You guys have a lot going on here. I did some research recently. I was actually pleasantly surprised to see how large of, for this county, the act, the livestock industry is, which is great to see.
Thank you. Okay, on to five C. Discussion and Possible Action Relative to Request From Victory Village For Reduction In Building Permit Fees Relative To The Five Bedroom Expansion Project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Pretty good. Do you mind stating your name?
Yes. I'm Nicole Mulford. I'm here on behalf of Victory Village. I'm the Executive Director. Victory Village is revitalizing the existing property at 12408 Kennedy Flat Road in Jackson. The proposed project will expand the existing building to create a less congregate living situation for homeless veterans and their families. The project will replace an existing metal building and utilize the same foundation. The occupancy rate for the facility will remain at 20. We are not, uh, requesting an increase in occupancy. Uh, I am requesting the board review the impact fees as well as new project fees and consider a waiver.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I want to have our chief building inspector just address the fees.
He's back there.
I see him back there, okay. Now, I will say the only fees that the county really has any, um, option on is the building inspection fee based on declaration of value and the building planning review based on declaration of value. Those are the only fees that, um, we really have any control over. Cause rest of, Accra, that's a whole different, you know, we collect it for these other agencies that we don't.
Yes, and I understand that. So, um, a lot of the fees are for new pro- uh, construction. They're for new projects, um, and they're also for impact, which we are not actually increasing any occupancies. So I'm unsure what the impact would be, um, because we're not increasing anything. In fact, um, the building department requested that we provide something that showed that we would not be increasing the number of beds.
You're talking like a traffic mitigation fee?
Yeah, well, any of them, any of the impact fees really, because it will remain the same. There's not really a change.
So how are you building five new rooms?
Because they're single room occupancy. The, so like I said in my introduction, um, we are doing a less congregate setting. VA is wanting all of their grantees to create a less congregate setting. And so in order to do that, we do need to provide five more rooms so that they can each have their own room. And that is due to COVID and other communicable diseases. Um, and that, that is, uh, why we propose this project.
Okay. Todd, you want to come up and?
So Nicole, you're not changing the square footage?
Well, there's an existing building. So there is an existing building.
Metal building, right?
Yes, yes. And we are, um, it, there would be a square footage change of about 1,400 square feet.
Okay. I wasn't quite clear on that.
Okay.
Sorry, Todd.
It's okay. Um, Todd Bar with the Building Department. The building fees on here, uh, what has been charged is a plan check, uh, plan check fee and another deposit which is refundable. The building inspection fees actually amount to $1,893.75. As far as, um, waiving that, I, I. As far as, um, waiving that, I, I, that's totally up to the board. I would have no issue with that. The, as far as the impact fees, uh, of course, I think there's, um, like you said, I don't, I don't think the, I don't know if the board has the, the authority over those, so.
As far as I know, we don't. Greg?
So, um, there's traffic, AFPD, um, ACR, you wouldn't, um, there is the ca, the, the county facilities fee, impact fee. But the way those work is usually, you know, someone has to pay them, so if, if the county waives impact fees for people, um, that pot is short for the demand or for the impact, and so the county doesn't, you know, would have to make up that difference in the end.
So there's no increased impact that would cost the county any?
But that's, you know, we, we don't look at it that way, because then, you know, if, if someone said, well, I'm building a new home, but I don't have any kids, I'm not going to pay the park impact fee. It doesn't work that way.
So it's not a home, it's for nonprofit that serves homeless veterans, and that's the difference here.
The building is the impact, and it, if you don't, you know, maybe you don't have it in the future, and it, it will be an impact, so there's no way to.
Yes, so.
To, to waive you and collect it against the, the next owner.
Okay, so the building department, um, required us to provide something that showed that we would not be increasing past twenty beds, so that future individuals who maybe take over the building cannot increase the occupancy.
I, I don't know that that's how it works. I don't think that's how it works, so.
Okay, so how would we request a waiver of those fees?
Well, let me talk to Todd first.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question for him before I answer that question. Todd, on the building, you have building inspection fees based on declared valuation, and you have, that's the eighteen ninety-three seventy-five. Then you have building plan review fees based on declared valuation, so potentially both those could be waived, correct?
Yeah, that, yes, potentially it could. The building and plan review have actually already been, or the plan review's already been done. The other fees that we collect on behalf of the state, which are like a forty-six dollars and fifty cent part of it, those go directly to the state. We can't waive their fee. But yeah, we have already charged the plan review fee on this.
I think we have to look at the, the purpose of what they're trying to accomplish there and to help veterans. My feeling is we could look at waiving a portion or all of that county facility impact fee.
You know, I have, I have a question on that. Not sure if I'm for it or against it really, um, but just thinking about it, I, I do like veterans. One question I'd have, is there an, anything that would stop them from, at some point in the future, shutting down their operation and saying, sell that facility?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So I mean, I would think if we, if we did go forward, I don't know if there's a way you could do it to where if they ever did that, those fees would come, if we, if we did waive them, they'd come doing payable. Um, it's one thing if it's, it's serving the veterans, it's something else if that, if, whatever reason, they shut down their nonprofit and said, hey, we're gonna sell this piece of property, and it's got five apartments on it. I'd have a problem with that, for sure.
Nicole, who owns the property?
Victory Village owns the property.
As a nonprofit, right? So if it was ever sold, where would the money go?
It would go back into the Public Benefit Corporation.
So, so you could defer the, the, you could defer the fees, the county-controlled fees, which, um, you know, is the, the county facilities fee, and there's a, potentially the, the local component of the track, traffic fee, but the other fees are controlled by other agencies. The, the board would have no, no authority over the regional, uh, the ACR, um, any school fees.
And what about the county facility impact fee? Could that be deferred?
That could be deferred as well, al- although, you know, if you defer it, you know, it depends on how, you know, so then there's an agreement, whether, whether you get it ten years, twenty years, if, if that ever happens, um, you'd have to, you'd have to either, they did have to pay voluntarily, or you'd have to sue them if they didn't.
You couldn't put it on the title or?
You could put a lien, but then the lien's gonna add costs, because we're gonna need the preliminary totter report. We're gonna want people to change their priorities so that we have priority. I mean, that's up to the board, and I don't know if it's, you know, twenty thousand dollars is not a lot of money in the big picture.
Right, so her course of action might possibly be, let's use ACR as an example, they have a governing board, she could appeal to them on their fee specifically.
Well, yeah, so that.
Or a reduction, or.
Yeah.
Try to help the veterans, because I think we all agree it's a worthwhile cause. We gotta figure out some vehicle to make it work. Might be a lot of running around, Nicole, but.
I can do that. I've done it before.
Because we collect the fees, but it's strictly a pass-through. It goes through the county coffers, but.
I understand that, and I really appreciate you, um, having this discussion.
I'll do, call for, uh, anybody out from the public? Want to talk on this?
Can I?
Yes, yes.
I just want to clarify a couple of things before we move on. That what they call the C and E deposit is two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. That's also a state-required fee, which is refundable at the end of the project. It's basically so that materials or waste materials from the project are properly disposed of. So again, that's refundable. We automatically refund it once the project's final, and they provide the receipts. And my main concern, I think, is just the state fees. Like I said, the forty-six fifty definitely is something that will go to the state, will be responsible for.
We're not, you know, we're all like.
I just wanted to clarify.
Understand, appreciate it. And, uh, again, for maybe from the public, anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay, back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board waive the, or defer the county-controlled fees, the county facility impact fee, the building inspections, building plan review, and the, the, uh, county-controlled local traffic fee for Victory Village for their application.
And do we have to go to county council?
So, so what, what, what I would suggest is, you know, I, I, I think you treat the, the fees different than the imp, the, the, the building department fees different. I think you can just waive them today if you want. Um, but the impact fees would probably be direction, and we would do an agreement, a promissory note where they, where deferral, like, we've, so we would defer these impact fees. They'd acknowledge that they would owe them if, if they ever sold the.
Modify the motion, then waive the building department fees, and then, um, instruct county council to work with Victory Village to put an agreement together to defer the other fees.
So, just to be clear, those are the, the county facilities fee, and do you want to include?
The local traffic.
Local traffic, the local traffic component?
I'd second that. That local traffic, Todd, that's probably the two-twenty-six-fifty, correct? Or is that the nine-thousand fifty-nine sixty?
That's.
Nine thousand, okay.
Yeah, yeah, nine thousand fifty-nine.
So the, the traffic would also be under the wave?
Only the local. There's a, the traffic split into the local, local county roads, and then the regional roads that goes to ACTC. I don't think you can waive those.
Right.
No, she'd have to go to them, yeah.
What I'm saying, are we gonna, uh, the, the, are we running an agreement on the local impact fees also?
That's my intention in the motion.
Okay.
Bill May was here, he'd probably be screaming right now, but either we talk the talk on supporting veterans, or we, or we don't.
Yep, I agree.
I agree, so I'll second that.
Okay. Anything under further discussion? Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Four, zero, one, okay. Thank you, Nicole, for coming forward.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do for the veterans.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Um, also, I wanted to offer my grant writing skills if there are any transportation grants in the future, um, to help mitigate that cost, and I know there are. They're kind of, you know.
They're just crazy. Some of them, you know, I, it, we see them all the time, and we're always try, we get CSAC to send stuff to us, but they want us to put more money into bicycle lanes than just putting tar down the ground. Well, we want to just put tar on the ground.
Right.
Asphalt, I should say, and it's, and it's, yeah.
Okay.
But I thank you.
Uh, yes, of course. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. On to five D, Amador Senior Center, presentation by Chris Carlton. Amador Senior Center Executive Director regarding update on meals on wheels.
Hi, good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning. Chris Carlton, Executive Director with Amador Senior Center. Thanks for taking a little bit of time for us to update you. I was here last in November to give you an update, so I thought, we had quite a bit of hectic storms there, so I thought it might be time to, to bring another update as far as where our program is and where it stands. The first slide I have to show you is a brand-new truck that we just received in February, and it, this thing has been a game changer for us. It's four-wheel drive. It's an F-one-fifty.
Well, yeah, sure, it's a short truck.
It is, isn't it? I was surprised it was so small, um, but it holds almost two-hundred meals and helps us to get those distributed to clients. This truck saved us during the storms. We were only, uh, unable to get to eight clients during that entire time, if you think about all that snow load in, in the up-country area. So this truck helped us do it. We had some dedicated staff who certainly snowshoed through some pretty thick snowdrifts to get to people's homes. We had one client of country, a constituent of yours as well, who lost their home to snow load and ended up living down here and is still in a hotel, but continuing to receive meals. We just shifted that person to a different route, and we continue to support them. So that's the difference that these meals make. This truck was purchased, not with any of the county funds, of course, but through a grant with California Department of Aging through Area Twelve. It cost us seventy-two thousand dollars to have that vehicle, and it was all provided by a, by a state grant to make that possible. So, we're expecting a second truck here within the next two or three weeks, which is going to allow us to increase capacity even more, and that vehicle will also be four-wheel drive. It's identical to this one. So Amador County has received a hundred-and-forty-four roughly thousand dollars in infrastructure grants because of this program to help us, uh, serve the constituents of this county. The next slide I want to show you is a total of our fiscal year since, uh, I was here in November. I wasn't able to report this number. We, uh, were able to deliver a total of twenty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-three meals for the entire, um, calendar year, and the next slide will show you a breakdown of February, which is our most recent reporting month, so you get an idea of the difference that, uh, county funding has made. In February of twenty-twenty-two, last year, we were able to deliver twelve-hundred-and-fifty-two meals. This year, we were able to more than double that, to two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventeen, which is an increase of sixteen-hundred-and-sixty-five meals, in large part due to county funding, due to the investment you made a little bit about a year ago, uh, so generously into this program. And then, uh, I kind of broke it down a little bit, just to kind of play with some numbers and give us an idea of what kind of impact that made. The county support is twenty-five-hundred dollars a month, if you were to break it up across twelve months, which equals and is being covered by that little bar at the bottom, per meal support of a dollar fifty per meal, just in the difference in meals between one February to the next. If you were to take the full twenty-nine-hundred dollars, it would be cut in half to seventy-five cents. So you can see that the investment on your part helps in a little way, but it's a lot of help for us to make this possible. Comes out to a dollar fifty a meal in those extra surplus meals we were able to do. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two, we were able to deliver a total of sixteen thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-two meals, if we get the next slide to come up. This year already, to the current, uh, last month through February twenty-twenty-three, so not even a full fiscal year, you can see the difference. We delivered twenty-five thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-seven meals to date. We average about two-thousand a month, as you saw in February's report, two-thousand to three-thousand. So we're looking at another probably six, six to eight thousand meals between now and the end of the fiscal year, which would put that number at about thirty-three thousand to thirty-four thousand as our projected meal delivery for this fiscal year, which is well more than double what we did last year. And again, directly because of the support coming from the county, and we're grateful for that. Finally, we just concluded a survey, uh, of all our clients to find out how they feel about our program. I can't give you all of those results because we had hundreds of them, but we pulled a few that we thought would be of interest to you, and when asked what people enjoyed about this service, they said, the best service I've ever had. They said, the smiling faces at my door and getting a complete meal are what their favorite part was. The two things that our clients said in that survey that seemed to be a resounding, uh, echo of message that we are doing the right thing was, my drivers have made all the difference because I see them every day, and they make me smile or laugh, and the quality of the food is something I enjoy. Those were the two sort of constants throughout those, those surveys. So, I want to thank the county again for your support to make this program possible. This is what we've been able to do with, with your investment to, to help us through, uh, not only the challenges of the storms, but also in delivering high-quality service to the, to the older adult clients in our county. Um, there is a little map at the end that just shows you again where we deliver. This is every single day, a hot meal that goes out from our center located here in Jackson. Some of our routes take two to three hours to deliver every day, but our drivers enjoy it, they love it, and they are just as happy to, to make the deliveries as the clients are to receive them. Are there any questions maybe you have?
Anything for the board?
I just had one. I, I think I asked before, but I can't remember the answer, if it was answered. It looks like there's, um, none delivered in Plymouth area?
Yes, Supervisor Neto, you did ask that question back in November.
Yeah.
And we've done, uh, marketing and outreach into those areas, and that's the result we have as far as demand.
I guess they're just self-sufficient then, which is okay. Thank you.
The River Pines has the biggest demand for us as far as the most rural location. I think we serve three clients out there, and that's quite a drive every day.
I see you go up eighty-eight pretty far too now.
Yes, we're all up into Pioneer and that outlying area, and so we do deliveries in pretty far-out areas. I would say most of the clients that we weren't able to reach were in that area.
And those eight residents you couldn't reach, or eight households, what happened to them? Was there an alternative?
A few, so, back in November, we delivered a shelf-stable package of three meals, so that anytime through the winter months, something like that were to happen, where we couldn't reach them for two or three days, they had the option of dipping into that shelf-stable meal. I can tell you that there were a certain segment of that eight, maybe one to two, we couldn't get a hold of. So we assumed that they went to lower ground, they got out of that, uh, storm before it came, um, they're back on our service delivery, so they're safe, but we assume they made a transition without contacting us. They found some alternative location to live. Some, when we contacted them, they said, we're holed up, we're doing well, and, um, we fully expected you would not get to us.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chris, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for the time.
Uh, actually, is there anything from the public want to say? Okay, anybody on, anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you again, gentlemen.
Again, thank you, Chris, for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, let's jump down to five G right quick. Discussion on possible action relative to the chairman's signature on a letter in opposition to the proposed release of Plaster County Superior Court of a sexual violent predator to live in a housing at eighteen-nine-oh-one Shake Ridge Road. Such a letter has already been sent by the sheriff and district attorney with an upcoming hearing scheduled of April seventh. Come on forward.
Now's your turn.
Thank you, and good morning. Thank you for the time to hear me. Um, I may name. Thank you and good morning. Thank you for the time to hear me. Um I'm my name is Marcia Uranda. I live at eighteen nine oh three Shake Ridge Road and this has been a total surprise to us. And I am so appreciative of the time you all are taking and the support we've had from Sheriff Redmond and Senator Marie Alvarado Gill and some other people behind the scenes. Um I just wanted to put a face to the address and just express my concerns as a homeowner and a resident of this community. My husband and I retired here a couple years ago specifically for the peace and quiet and tranquility of this area. And having the six hundred acres of B L M land directly adjacent to eighteen nine oh one has been a really big plus. Um I ride my horse out there just about every day or hike my dogs by myself, my husband praying that I come back. And you know, it's like I say, it's been a total big surprise and a great worry for us because we have ten grandchildren. My oldest granddaughter Sonia is starting to spend parts of her summer with us and you know, she loves being outdoors, loves being in the swimming pool. She's visible, everything. Our entire property is visible from eighteen nine oh one. And so my ten-year-old granddaughter is in and out of the pool all summer, playing with the dogs, the cats, feeding the chickens. We hike. She wants to learn to ride my horse this year. You know, it's just been a wonderful, beautiful retirement and the fact that this person can be released there is very frightening because there's minimal cell service in the area. He's got six hundred acres to disappear in. And and I know that a lot of these issues have been addressed. My husband will have some of that to say. I don't want to be repetitive. I just want to say from my perspective and my lifestyle, I really, really don't want to be a prisoner in my own home. That's not what we bought this place for. I think there's quite better alternative places for this person where he can maybe be rehabilitated if that's a possibility at all, at least be monitored. I don't, nobody's told me how he's going to be monitored here. Nobody told me he was coming. The first inkling I had of this was two and a half weeks ago when Sheriff Bonif came to our door and said, hey, guess what? Wow, you know, and the public outcry and support has been really tremendous with, you know, online petitions, um letters. We are personally have written letters to the presiding judge, dignity, how not dignity, how sorry, liberty health, which is kind of like an oxymoron in my opinion. But um you know, I just, I feel I don't want to feel helpless and I don't want to feel angry. This is not what my life is about. And um I'm just asking you guys to do whatever you can, help support us, wish this man well somewhere else. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Paul Uranda and I am a resident at eighteen nine oh three. I want to thank Amador County Board of Supervisors for giving me this opportunity to speak concerning Placer County Superior Court placing of Williams Stevenson's a sexual predator as our next-door neighbor. I would like to thank Sheriff Gary Redmond, District Attorney, and Senator Marie for their support and excellent letters they have written. I would like to begin by how stressful this is has been for me and my family and also the neighbors. Um we have ten grandchildren. Our neighbors have children. Um there's several bus stops right at the end of our road and for where Mr. Uh Williams or Stevenson will be is he has to walk two hundred yards down to the front of the where the mail is at and where the bus stops are at. So and he has to go through our uh there's um easement through our property and other uh neighbors' property to get to this mail or even to even drive down there. So he's going to be going back and forth there daily and that really concerns me. Uh Mr. Stevens has been a violent problem for many years, which frightens me since he'll be able to walk around in his property, which is one acre, and so he can be able to go anywhere and which is right on our property line. And that really um concerns me. Um the cell phone service, like my wife said, is not one hundred percent. He could walk around anywhere in his property and even in that B L M land and not be uh monitored. Um also, I'm a volunteer fireman for the Lockwood Fire Department and I will be called out anytime during the day or night and it'll be very concerning for me that leaving my wife or my grandchildren alone. So I'm not sure what the Amador County Board of Supervisors can do, but I plead if you can do anything to help us, it would be so um much appreciated. And thank you and God bless, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Morning.
Rebi District Attorney. Just wanted to let you know a little bit about the situation, what wasn't done, what should have been done by uh Placer County in this process and what Amador County has done upon notification. First of all, uh this process began uh on we received the first time that we had any knowledge of Mr. Stephenson was a letter that we didn't even know his name at the time, just that there was a sexually violent predator. Uh the county of domicile was Placer County. There was a minute order. This was a letter that was dated uh September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. And the minute order said that the Placer County Court had authorized a search of five counties in the greater Sacramento area, which included Amador County, also included Sacramento, Yolo, Sutter, and El Dorado. And that further notification would occur if a placement was intended outside of Placer County. Then there was no there was nothing in the interim. There was no information that was received from the court uh by our county. Uh there was uh no minute orders that were given stating what the extraordinary circumstances were that the law demands must be articulated on the record by the court before the court can uh determine that an out of that a placement outside the county of domicile, which is Placer County, can occur. Uh nothing. Then on March sixth of two thousand twenty-three, we received a letter sent by email um containing uh drop docs. Uh it was documents and uh that indicated for the first time who the name of the uh individual who was William Stephenson, uh what the proposed placement address was, the date of commitment, uh which was December first of two thousand and nine, the county of commitment, which was El Dorado County, the county of domicile, which is Placer County, the county of proposed residence, which was Amador County, and the proposed placement date, which was to be determined uh pending the Superior Court in Placer County's hearing on April seventh uh at eight thirty. Pursuant to the code, uh written objection has to be served upon the court uh and the department within fifteen days after receiving notice. Uh the sheriff and I both sent a letter to the court and to um the Department of Social uh State Hospitals indicating our objection to the proposed placement location. Uh we also I our office sent an independent letter uh stating our legal objections that went out on March seventeenth, so we could be within that fifteen days. I requested documents from the Placer County District Attorney's Office because to date we've received zero, no documents whatsoever. I've requested documents from the Department of State Hospitals, from Con Rep, uh from the Placer County Council, and the Placer County Superior Court will be getting uh whatever documents and uh transcripts that we need to get so we can find out what the court found to be the extraordinary circumstances uh to justify going outside the council. They are supposed to demonstrate a robust search within their county uh amongst all the placeholders within their county to find a residence for him. And cost of the residence cannot be uh cannot constitute extraordinary circumstances. And there's a case ironically involves Placer County. Placer County was victorious. Santa Barbara County um tried to place a sexually violent predator in Placer County uh and because they said they didn't have suitable housing um and extraordinary circumstances justify placement outside of that county. Placer County successfully fought it off saying, well, if you don't have suitable housing, um then you can release him as a transient in your community. And that's precisely what we're asking uh um Placer County to do. If they can't find a suitable location for him within their own county, then release him. I I know they don't want to do that, but maybe that's the fire that has to be lit under uh the the court and that community before they find a suitable placement for him and not unload him on an adjoining community. Um what hasn't been done, uh our office is to receive pursuant to Government Code Section six-six-oh-eight-point-six subdivisions B one and two uh information from Placer County uh in including declarations. They have to file declarations stating all the efforts that they've taken to try to find suitable housing within their community. We haven't received none of that. Uh they were supposed to have given uh information uh stating the community connections that Mr. Stephenson has with our county, such did he live here before? Has he right uh has he been employed here? Does he have next of kin? None of that was done. Uh there was no mention of or minute orders received by our office uh stating what the extraordinary circumstances were or transcript. There was no involvement at all with any official in Amador County until the March uh sixth letter. That was it. And at that point, they had already solidified in Amador County as a place uh for him to be uh located. Uh I would have appreciated that information because uh we would have been able to include that in our writ our written letter to the court. Um but they saw fit not to provide it. So that was also in our letter that we haven't been provided that information. I will state that to the court um when I I testify and the sheriff testifies on April seventh. Um and hopefully we can fight this thing off. It's the first time that this has occurred. Uh been DA since nineteen ninety-nine took office and this hasn't happened to our county before. But uh they got our attention and and we'll do what we can do. Any questions?
I appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rebi, seems like they did not do their due diligence. One, they didn't as a courtesy, the DA in Placer County didn't contact you, the the chief probation officer didn't contact Chief Benini here, but it seems like they didn't do their due diligence as to where this person is being placed next to domiciles where there are going to be children and other people. And this person, I don't know what kind of heinous act he committed, but we sure don't want him next to families where children are going to be coming in, whether it's children or grandchildren.
Nor did the sheriff from Placer County contact uh our sheriff. That that didn't happen. So the fir the very first notice we got was that March sixth letter.
Seems like a clear sign from them. They just want to offload him from their county and get him out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, that seems to be face value to me it's going on there. I mean, and I think I like what you were in the sheriff doing Sheriff Redmond, um Mr. Rebi, because it's a pretty remote area up there of Shake Ridge Road. I mean, you're a long ways from basically um your law enforcement where they're based out of. Um takes a long time to get there. And this Mr. Stevenson is a repeat uh violent um sexual predator. And it looks like it's it's not it's not um a one-time offense. Uh got drunk, got stupid, whatever. Not saying it's right. He's done it repeatedly and it seems pretty um pretty planned.
Yeah. And and you know, one thing I neglected to say, uh why here? Um I mean, I I I get that maybe they think we don't have the resources and maybe we're more rural than they are, but he's supposed to be receiving supervision and treatment in our county. We're not prepared for that. We don't have a breakout uh a specialty court on 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 mental health. Uh we don't have a mental health diversion program. We opted out of that uh with A B um eighteen ten. Uh we have one psychiatrist in our entire county who's up to her gills in cases, not only the cases from behavioral health, but the cases that come out of the sheriff's office. And and we're supposed to provide treatment and we can provide suitable treatment to a sexually violent predator better than counties that have many more resources than we do in that regard.
Well, it depends on the definition of suitable treatment. I mean, in this county, suitable treatment for somebody of this character might be a little different. Um the town hall meeting you're going to have, do you have a commitment that the the Department of State Hospitals official and Liberty Healthcare representative will both attend or have they not replied?
I'm sorry.
The you're going to have a town hall meeting.
Yes.
Correct? You've invited the an official representative from the Department of State Hospitals.
Yeah.
And from Liberty Healthcare.
Yeah.
Do we have confirmation they're attending?
I have not. Um I I've been in con uh conference with Sheriff Redmond this morning. I did not ask him those questions, but I think that we should we ought to have them there and they ought to be able to answer questions as to why they didn't involve us in any way in this process until that March sixth letter and why they haven't provided the information that they're supposed to provide under the government code to our office. So we could have had a meaningful informed letter to the court within that fifteen-day period that we were deprived of being able to do. We still did it, but we didn't have we don't we're in the dark. We don't know what information that they had.
You know, along that line, Todd, would it be something um would there be an avenue to ba base take legal action opposing it?
Yeah, I mean, they they did that in Placer County.
That's what I thought you said, yeah.
When Santa Barbara tried to uh relocate a sexually violent predator in their community. So yes, uh I I think that there there is an avenue for for legal action. I haven't uh I think County Council and I will talk about that depending upon what happens on April seventh. Um but but we we have after that date, I know that an affidavit can be filed within fifteen days after that uh court uh determination of of out of county placement. And I certainly if that's the way it goes down, that I intend to do that. And I work with the county uh with with the county council and making sure that the best product that we can present, we we present.
Good.
Yeah.
How much time do we have? When is the release date?
We don't know when he's released. Uh that will be uh as I sit here today, we have not been provided that information. Um and when he would be placed in our community is to be determined based upon the court's decision on April seventh.
All right, thank you. Come up, Ford Marshall.
You had another gentleman that wanted to.
Yeah, I understand.
I have a question for um Mr. Attorney Rebi. Is there any legal action that you could take to or anything we can ask the homeowner that is renting, supposedly renting to Mr. Stevenson to reconsider? Can she break back? Is there a contract that she's in and she can break? I've personally not spoken to her on this issue for, well, most of the most of the reason is she's not back in the area. She's not living in that house. There's been a little bit of agitation in the neighborhood in the past year and I just, I don't want to aggravate the situation with her, but I think there should be some kind of legal recourse that may be brought to bear on that issue. It seems to me if she could just resend that offer, it'll be done. Just a thought.
The legal recourse that is available right now is provided within the Government Code Section and that's what uh our office is following through on. Uh as to whether or not there's any uh civil action that can be taken, I haven't really looked at that. I know that there's rights of I know that there's rights of quiet enjoyment of property. I don't know, certainly that this would seem to interfere with quiet enjoyment of property, but that would be something that would be determined by a consultation with a civil attorney as to what remedies, if any, are available to a property owner that adjoins a property where a sexually violent predator has been relocated.
Thank you, sir.
I would just like to implore the board to...
Can you state your name for us?
Oh, I'm sorry. Larry Duclos, Concerned Citizen. I'm here speaking for my family. I would implore the board to support any and all legal litigation procedures in this matter, if it, if it were to come to that. It sounds like it may be the only tangible remedy to this thing beyond appealing to someone's goodwill and following through and doing the right thing, doing the right thing. I think the board owes it to this county and this community not to fall short on this situation. And with all due respect to the young lady who spoke earlier and lives next door, I don't think the word, the word is out now. I don't think it's been shouted and broadcast as hard as it could have been. This is, I just learned about this several days ago, something my wife showed me on social media. Hopefully, more and more will become aware of it and will have a good turnout and maybe get some, at least a plan in, you know, together and get a good turnout in the town meeting that's scheduled on the 4th. But I just cannot see how this entire community would not be up in arms on this deal. And I implore the board, like I say, to follow through and support whatever our DA and our sheriff can accomplish in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Karen Warburton. Today, I am here as a constituent and a resident of District 5. I live at 18905 Shake Ridge Road. This is the property that also is adjacent to 18901, where they plan on placing this sexually violent predator. Three weeks ago, I had no idea what a sexually violent predator was until the sheriff showed up on my doorstep and knocked on the door and proceeded to tell me what was going on. I did a lot of research in that time. Mr. Stevenson has a preference for young adult women and teenage girls. He has been termed a sexually violent predator by the court the first time he was caught and sentenced to approximately 30 years in prison. He was also let out in the same fashion, put into Placer County, which was his last residence of domicile. He was caught with child pornography during that time and was put back in prison. So he, it's not a matter of if he's going to reoffend, he has this title or this classification because he is going to reoffend. According to the National Sexual Violence Resource Center, one in three women in the United States are sexually assaulted. It is life-changing and it can ruin, it can ruin someone's life. So the fact that they would place this individual in the backwoods where he has access to all sorts of properties, where there are a lot of children around, a lot of young adult women around, moving into the neighborhood, should be a concern for everybody. Yes, we don't want this individual at all in Amador County. I would stress to you to look into what the Santa Cruz County Board did, where they basically passed a resolution to not even allow sexual violent predators in their county anymore. Whether they can legally do that or not, I don't know, but they have done that just as a show of support and strength. I really appreciate the community coming together as much as it has. We have tried to put out information on social media as much as possible. We've, we have partnered as residents, we've partnered with the sheriff's office and are involved in every way we can be. One thing to point out, I want to make it clear that this house is not a place for another sexually violent predator. So if we get out of this situation, they may very well just identify this house as another, for another person. It is not a good situation. It does not matter who the person is. We live in a very rural area of the county. As been, as Supervisor Onetto brought up, we are not close to law enforcement at all. We have, it's been brought up already. We have sketchy phone service. And we have a singular driveway for all the houses. And that driveway is an easement, but it runs over my private property and through my front yard, essentially. I do not want this man's lifestyle to become my lifestyle. I don't want to have to deal with his treatment people, his caretakers, whoever they are, coming in and out of my driveway. I don't want to have to look at him. I don't want to see him. His house is directly behind mine. We all have a little bit of acreage, but the way our homes are situated, they are very close to each other because of the driveway. My neighbors, who already came up and spoke, would never be able to leave their property or come home without him knowing because of the way the homes are situated. If he were to saunter down my driveway to go out and get his mail, I'm going to have to deal with that every single day. So I want to thank you for bringing up this topic. I want to thank you for your support and for, you know, at least having, having the strength to put out some sort of statement or resolution regarding this issue. And I want to thank the community for their support as well. And then come to our town hall meeting on April 4th, right here in the board chambers at 6 o'clock PM.
More importantly, are you going to go to the hearing in Placer County?
Oh, yes, sir, I am. You can bet it, yeah. And I hope other people will come as well. It is a trek. It's in Auburn, so, and it's at 8:30 in the morning, so it's going to be a trek to get up there. But, you know, here's the thing, is Placer County has a lot more resources. They are a much bigger county. And the same can be said for El Dorado County. I was on Channel 13 News and in that report, they stated that they even apparently tried Sacramento County and where his family is. And they don't want him. Well, we don't want him either. And where we live is, you know, there's some fences, but everything's see-through, right? It's wire fence. So there's a lack of privacy. There is a lack of obvious borders to property because we all kind of live in the country. And, you know, the way that it is, is that when the neighbors get along, we interact quite frequently. And we're outside doing things. This is the kind of life that we live. We all have a little hobby farm. So we would never be able to have that lifestyle anymore. We would never be able to interact to that degree, just out of fear. Okay? Thank you so much. I appreciate you letting me have a chance to speak.
Thank you, Karen.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, this is Catherine Evid. I live about a mile east of the location that's proposed for Mr. Stevenson. My husband and I have lived here for 43 years. And one of the things that we value about this area is that it is quiet, peaceful, and safe. And even though we're far from services, including law enforcement, you know, the children that we know and have seen grow up here have been able to roam the neighborhood safely. Single people, women have been able to feel safe in their homes. And one of the things that is wonderful about this area is it is, like Ms. Warburton said, a place where small neighborhoods, the neighbors know each other, they value each other, they help each other, they care for each other. And to have that disrupted by the presence of someone who has no ties to our county, cannot get the services he needs here, is a threat to the safety of his neighbors and a disruption to their safety and sense of security in their own homes is just untenable. So I would like to urge you to send a very strong letter. I'm very grateful to DA Reby and Sheriff Redmond for what they are doing and for the neighbors who are organizing. One of my concerns, I've written my letter to Liberty Health, I did that right away. And one concern in this area is that if this man is being monitored with a battery device, power goes out here all the time. Mine's flickering this morning. And how is he even going to charge the batteries on his tracking device? It's just such an inappropriate place to put someone who has a history of violence toward women and youth, a history of violating probation, and absolutely no ties to Amador County. So I'm looking forward to your letter. I have a question, perhaps someone can answer. Supervisor Forster, you asked about the hearing. The last I heard, it wasn't clear whether the hearing was going to be open to the public? The one in Auburn, does anyone know if it's going to be open to the public?
The email says it is open to the public. It is open to the public.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on Zoom?
Go ahead, Robin, whenever you're ready.
Hi there. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Hi, I'm Robin. I am a resident and homeowner in Amador County. And I'd like to start first off by thanking Sheriff Redmond and DA Reby for being so proactive in opposing the placement of Mr. Stevenson in Amador County. I'd also like to thank the Board of Supervisors, specifically Brian Onetto, for bringing this situation to the attention of all the residents in this county at this meeting. I think all the parents along Shake Ridge Road, whose children use the bus route, should absolutely be aware of what is happening. I am a resident that would be directly impacted by Mr. Stevenson's placement, as he would be my neighbor. My wife broke earlier, Karen. The presence of him in our neighborhood, I think, would definitely be life-altering for myself, my family, and my neighbors. And I just wanted to ask all of the members of the community that are listening to please consider joining us at the town hall meeting so we can continue, you know, with our public review of the placement of Mr. Stevenson in Amador County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Bring it back to the board. I'm thinking we're all on the same wavelength, but we'll vote on it. But I'd ask Supervisor Forster, if you wouldn't mind writing a letter, you can... It might have too much fire in it.
I know it, but I'll take it. I'll sign that.
I find it ironic that in the letter from Mark Grabow, PhD, chief psychologist, ConRep Operations, the Department of State Hospitals, their slogan on the bottom is caring today for a self and healthy tomorrow. You can guarantee that's going to be in the letter. And I think we should make sure that it's also sent to the governor, his name's on top of this, to know that we don't want this person in our community, as you wouldn't want him in your community. Governor's got three children. I don't think he'd want a person like this next to his family.
Well, on that note, I think, you know, we should, we should still, I just look at it, I think we should, if there's an avenue, file a lawsuit if it doesn't go the way we think it should. Just, not just this item, but in the future, otherwise, hey, other counties or cities will say, let's go dump our people in Amador County. And we don't want that. On a bigger basis, you know, we have, we have a problem internationally, it's especially bad in California. Part of what we're looking at, folks, is it's our own fault. Maybe not you folks out there, but maybe some of you, because look what you've done, what I can see in America anymore. It seems like the convicts' rights trump regular people's rights. If you're doing what you ought to do, mind your own business. Government doesn't seem to have too much for you, but if you're out there doing things you shouldn't do, they got a million programs. And some of these heinous, repeat offenders, I think there should be one program for them and that'd take care of the problem. But, but that doesn't seem to be societies, they haven't got, crossed that bridge yet. But maybe in time they will because we're getting there. That's my stump speech.
Well, I think a lawsuit will be the thing to do if we can't stop this. We need to go down that road. In one of my other lives, I worked with youth sex offenders for about a year and a half. And I can tell you that the worst of the worst, they will not be reformed. And they will continue their behavior until they're locked up or killed. And Youth Authority at that time had a procedure called an 1800, that if a violent youthful predator was coming up for parole and he had to be released, they could hold him for an additional two years. I remember one individual specifically, he had an 1800, he had a second 1800, he finally hit 25 years old and the court ordered him released. This individual told me straightforward, when I got him mad enough, that, yeah, I'm going to go out and be a long-haul trucker and I'm going to, I'm going to rape kids. They're released to the community and they continue their behavior, unfortunately. It just, it's pathetic, our, our system in a lot of ways, trying to deal with these people.
Mr. Chairman, we also should probably follow along with that county, I forget the name of it, that...
Santa Cruz.
Santa Cruz. And they're, even, I don't know if it's legal or not, passed a resolution. We just don't have the services or the means so they could take a look at us and move to... We shouldn't even be anyone's choice when it comes right down to it. For a future agenda, if it shows any plausibility.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion right now?
I'd go ahead and make that motion, that we send a letter of opposition to propose release by Placer County Superior Court. Mr. William Stevenson, Amador County.
Second.
And maybe also part of that motion, and to whoever else we feel is appropriate in looking into it more. Whatever agencies, parties.
Are you okay with writing the letter, Supervisor Forster? I'll have it done by tomorrow. But the really big thing needs to happen, in the counties that have stopped this, short of legal action, the communities come unglued and made such a noise that it's heard in Sacramento and they stopped the placement. Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's 401. Okay, does anybody need to take a break?
Yeah, let's take a second.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break, back to, till 11, excuse me.
And Amador Water System, AWA is also requesting the county to sign on as a co-applicant for the grant, with the county furnishing staff time that would be in reverse through the grant.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is a request I received from AWA, and as such, I think it pretty much all speaks for itself. Anybody from AWA want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors, Larry McKenney, Amador Water Agency. I think it is pretty self-explanatory. I know that the board is all very aware of our capacity constraints in the Amador Water System, and how it's affecting the ability to make land use decisions, and for us to provide safe and reliable water supply to people. This application is for a planning grant that would help us to develop information about a replacement plant, and it would actually help to fund the application work for larger implementation grants. This is a pretty modest grant application, but it's a pretty short fuse. We have to put our application in this week, and the funding is for resilience and climate change, but that can include system consolidation. And we're trying to set ourselves up in a position of saying that replacing our inadequate ion and tanner treatment plants with a new consolidated plant is a system consolidation. If we produce enough capacity for ourselves in the future, we could also have enough capacity to maybe provide treated water to some other small systems that are at risk in the county near the Amador Water System, that currently don't have any alternative sources of supply. That's a goal for the county, it's a resilience strategy. It would allow us to facilitate growth decisions that are made to keep urban areas more dense, and have less growth out in the fire risk areas. So that's a resilient strategy, and I think the state is going to be supportive of this. Because it is by nature a program of collaboration, we have to be able to show that we have collaboration from other agencies. We're very aware that in the housing element update discussion, there's been a talk about the municipal agencies and the Amador Water Agency working together to try to solve this problem, try to find the funding to solve this problem. So I think that this is in that realm. We have received three letters of support for the grant so far, one from AMRA, one from the City of Jackson, one from the City of Sutter Creek, and I believe we'll have one this week from the City of Plymouth. And we hope that you'll also sign a letter of support. The co-applicant issue is not that different, actually. We are required ultimately to have at least one co-applicant for the grant. I've learned this week that we don't have to have that for the application this week, we just need to have that in time for signing a grant agreement, which will be in a few months if it's awarded to us. And it carries no obligation at all. There's no responsibility for any kind of local match with this grant, or for any staff time. It does create the possibility that if a co-applicant does commit staff time to any of this collaborative work we're talking about, that time could be grant reimbursable, but there's no commitment to it at all. So today, we're saying that we'd really like to get a letter of support, and I'd like to be able to say in the grant application that it is possible, perhaps even likely, that the county would be a co-applicant for us by the time we get to a grant agreement. My board chairman, Director Malinelli, the younger, is here with me today, and either of us would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anthony for the board?
As far as the county furnishing staff time, how much staff time would be required?
There is none required. It would be completely discretionary as the program rolls out, about how much work you might want to put into it. But there's no requirement to make a commitment, or to have budgeted for it. And right now, we're just developing a work plan. We're foreseeing having conversations with other surrounding small systems to gauge their interest in having an alternative supply connected to them, and what their growth projections would be, and doing some collection of information about growth projections within the existing service areas. It's pretty minimal in that regard, and there's actually no requirement that there be any staff time.
I guess, Mr. Riley, that would ease some of the pain of signing this...
Right, there wouldn't be any pain involved. I never anticipated it being a burden, some...
Well, it's always a burden when you're requiring our staffs to do extra duties.
Right, but, yeah, I think we're okay in terms of offering up staff if needed, to do it on a reimbursable basis, certainly.
Okay. I really see it as more of an opportunity. You may see a value in doing something in terms of the discussion with other communities that maybe we don't even recognize, and if you do, then you'd have the opportunity to have some grant reimbursement for time your staff may spend on it.
I just don't want it to be a burden on our staff, being able to accomplish their duties.
Absolutely understand that, yes.
Mr. McKenney? We talked verbally that there's been functional capacity, and realistic capacity, and overcapacity. But I thought you told me that there was a short-term solution at Tanner. Would this project put that on hold, then, if you're going to...
No, we are undertaking some actions at both plants now, in an effort to make their existing service more reliable. It's nowhere near what we need to be able to be what's called reliable capacity under our operating permits, but we haven't been operating within reliable capacity for a while now, anyway. We're hoping that we'll be able to squeeze enough extra capacity out of the plant, out of both plants, through near-term actions, to be able to approve some of the developments that are already in the queue. We'll see how that goes. Those actions are going to continue this year and next year, without regard to this grant application.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Neto?
Yeah, no, it's fine. No, I understand what you're looking to do, because the lack of water capacity is a problem. So I understand why you're wanting to do it. I will say, not to beat a dead horse, but I have been happy with the water agency for quite a while, you probably are real well aware of. I mean, over the years, we helped you folks. We busted a rear, I'd say, as far as a county, to accommodate and help the water agency. And there's a deal where we could have used a little bit of help, and it just seemed like there was just too many little things couldn't get done, it just wouldn't work out. I didn't appreciate that. Still aren't mad about it, haven't forgot about it. I think if something could have very easily been done, if the water agency wanted to cross that bridge and work with us. So that's what it talks about. We're pleased to write a letter of support. I think I'd probably be more allowable to say, we're writing a letter of support. If we do, I'm not necessarily pleased to be doing it.
I understand.
And that, you know, it goes for myself, too, as I'm part of First Mesa Meadow Water Association. We're still having problems up in the upcountry, you know, not the best water quality. You know, we're still within the fine thread of legal water, but it's really, you know, I've talked to Rick about it, and, you know, you've brought back one of the old plant managers up there to figure out where there's a problem, because this has been a continual problem. Well, I'm asking, why didn't that person be brought back a long time ago? Because this is something that we've been fighting over there for a long time. So this is, you know, we, as the board, myself, have hostility over all this, because it's one of those things, it's hard to overcome. We've had the hostility over Buckhorn Ridge Road, and, you know, a lot of these different items, and now you're asking for us just to wipe all that away, and say, oh, yeah, we're pleased to support you. You know, but I also don't want to hurt the county. So it's a catch-22, in all aspects, for me. And so, you know, you want us to work with you, but you don't work with us. So that's the major problem here. You know, we've bent over backwards, as Supervisor Neto said, and we have. You know, we pulled money out, you know, when we were doing the upper project, and now, you know, here we go again. What's going to happen this time? So, put my eight cents in here.
I can appreciate Chairman Browns and Supervisor Onetto's comments. And we heard you loud and clear, and I'm speaking for the board in this case. And I wish we could go back and change those things both of you mentioned. But we want to work collaboratively with you going forward, recognizing those errors that were made in the past, and apologize to both, to the county, for that. I wish it had turned out different.
Not to mention the ratepayers in Jackson.
And the ratepayers, exactly.
Who are still bleeding.
Right. So, going forward, you know, we need to secure the, you know, the water treatment plants, improve those plants, so that we can meet the needs of the county going forward. Again, just on behalf of the board, apologize for the past mistakes that were made, and we hope not to commit any more of those, and work collaboratively with the county going forward.
Another question on capacity, this goes back to when I was in the city council in Jackson. I've talked to Paul about this, and we turned in that we didn't have enough ED... I've talked to Paul about this, and we turned in that we didn't have enough EDUs and we had to expand the plant this much, and they, Regional Water Board, I think it was, said, we'll audit your will serves or your EDUs, they were called then. And we went from like 96 to 350. There were a couple of big-time landowners who just had 20, just tucked away. Is there any chance that could be part of the problem?
We have pretty extensively updated our commitments list for each of our six different treated service areas, two of which are On and Tanner, and we think that we've taken out a lot of what might have been deadwood in the past. We have commitments that we've made today, and there's been some discussion about, you know, whether those are, you know, all moving forward or not. My concern is that when you look at the maximum capacity of our plants today, it is right at what the maximum day demand is projected to be for our existing customers without connecting anyone new. And we aren't supposed to be in that situation. So we, for example, with the state rolling back its drought declaration, our board will be considering next week what action to take on that, and I'm going to be recommending that we continue to stay at stage two water alert and keep asking for water conservation, even in a flood year because of our treatment plant capacity.
A question on that. You know, what percent of your capacity do you ever reach at your maximum? Your first usage?
Oh, we have different, we have six different treatment plants or treatment facilities, but the ones we're talking about today are the Tanner Plant and the Ione Plant. And we calculate based on historical information what we expect our maximum day demand to be that's in the heat of the summer. And our maximum day demand in gallons per day is right at what our maximum plant production capacity is.
That's a calculation, but what is, what are the true numbers as far as what you're actually seeing?
We, we have seen those numbers in the past. That's why it's calculated that way. We've seen, we've seen the per capita usage at that level, and then we've had growth and we've had conservation measures that offset some of the growth. But, I mean, we're, our plants in the summer, those two plants run full out all the time, and we manage the fluctuations in demand with our in-system storage, which is not adequate. But the plants, if we didn't have the storage, the plants wouldn't be able to keep up with peak demand today. It's, it's really an uncomfortable situation, because if we have any kind of plant outage, we'll have to be asking for emergency water conservation, and we really don't want to be in, in the 21st century doing that.
Yeah, because I imagine you probably don't have massive amounts of storage, so if the plants go down, roughly, how long would you have, like, say, on, on one of those plants as far as the storage there to operate on?
The first day that I was at work at the Water Agency, I asked my staff what keeps them awake at night, and the answer was, if we have a down, an outage in the Tanner Water Treatment Plant in the summertime, without having additional demand reduction, we have five hours of storage.
Wow, okay.
It is an unhappy position to be in. Now, the City of Jackson, for example, has some of its own storage, so that, you know, might be, they're, they're one of our Tanner Plant customers, but not all of our customers have that kind of storage, so.
Yeah, five hours is not very long.
Rolling back to those EDUs, I was thinking about the Danco Project, and it has some merits, but I know there's, Gold Rush was right around the corner and the Rancheria Second of Pine Woods, or are those EDUs committed to those? Those seem both like they're dead horse projects.
I'd have to look at our commitments list. I don't want to say off the top of my head what the status of those is, but I will note that we have, we have gone through the list and talked to developers about what's moving and what's not. And for subdivision developers in the Tanner and Ione Treatment Plant Service Areas that are not in the CFD that we created, where people are paying a special tax to support treatment plant work, we've been telling subdivision developers that we will not likely have capacity to serve them when they reach the point of applying for service, when they're in our will serve process. We've been telling them that for two years.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Come on up.
Virginia Manor again. I'm rather concerned with what I'm hearing, because, again, now there's a fire going on, you know, with the Water Agency. We had this with this huge rate increase across the board just a couple of years ago that is affecting us for five years, and that was because, and I actually went up and did their demonstration area and all of that, and saw the corrosion inside of these pipes that have not been attended to, you know, in Sutter Creek and in different areas of the county. I mean, if you looked at that, you'd never want to drink water from this agency again. I thought that that, they realized their infrastructure was sagging to a point that it did affect the quality of the water and for the homes they are currently serving. Now I'm hearing, you know, well, we want a new plant because we can't serve everybody, and, you know, we can't get new people in here. Well, again, another fire, and this all had to have been known previously. So what does it come down to? It comes down to the taxpayer, the ratepayers having to offset somehow. And, you know, at what point, at what point do we say enough is enough? When I look at PG&E, nobody, PUC never supervised their infrastructure ratio to the new building ratio. That was never addressed. The PUC is there to protect us. Well, I'm wondering, do they look into all of this to protect us? Because I don't see that they did with PG&E, and I see the same infrastructure problems here, except now we want to run and build a new plant, too. And it just doesn't make sense to me as a ratepayer and as a citizen of this county. Let's clean up the quality of water that's an aged system that we know about before we start talking about anything further that would perhaps cause more money and concerns to our ratepayers, so, just a comment. I'm just kind of done with it, you know, as far as infrastructure needs to be supported, and that's the most important thing. Maintaining and taking care of the people you existingly have that have been paying your money to you. Sorry about the other, maybe you build more storage tanks, something to offset it till you can get control of the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, it's back to the board.
I don't think we have much choice here. If we want to have adequate water supply in the future, that we need to go through the planning efforts. I would move we support by letter the application by the Water Agency to the Office of Plan and Research for their grant.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And negative?
No.
No. So it's a 2-2, it does not pass. Onto 5F. General Services Administration, 2304 Shenandoah Rehabilitation Project, Suggested Action, Award Invitation to Bid ITB 2304. Rich, you want to come forward?
Been on the agenda before the Water Agency.
The hostility won't come towards you, sorry.
Need to talk to the Chair.
Rich Vila, Public Works Director. I've been before this group a couple of times to provide you an update on this project in its design stages, and we put this thing out to bid, and in February, we received six bids on the project, and got some pretty good, at least two bids were very good, we got some very good numbers. And the, as, as it's stated here, the low bid for the base bid work, which is the three-mile stretch, you know, comes in at 1.94 million dollars. That was well below the engineer's estimate for that work, thankfully so. The way our funding is sitting right now is that we can fund the base bid with available funds that we have through the Rule 20 proceeds, and, and there's some monies we got through ACTC through the coronavirus relief situation there. The way this project was bid is such that we award the contract on the base bid, and we had a bid alternate, which would extend the project another three-quarters of a mile, which in, in a practical sense would be from Bell Road up to the Lower Steiner Road intersection. And if, and if this group so chooses, we can do that work or not. You could just do the base bid work and, and award the contract that way. But you do have the option to award the alternate bid with the base bid. And, but the, what we have to decide on is how that alternate bid work will be funded. And this was discussed at our Public Works meeting a couple of weeks ago or last week, and the committee decided to have, to look at three sources of funding. We're looking low, under $600,000 for this work to do the, the alternate bid work. We can allocate SB1 monies from this upcoming fiscal year, 2324. We could use general fund dollars, which I usually have no purview over, so I, I can't weigh in on that per se. ACTC does have some banked RSTP funds that they could disperse, but that it would be up to the ACTC directors to do so. So that's, but there are some funds there that, that could be released for that. So there's kind of three alternatives for, for your, for your consideration to do that. Or if you decide that you just want to do the base bid work, then we, we're good to go.
Chuck, you had some input on this one?
Yes, I got some thoughts on this. The, so to get our $600,000, I, I talked to Rich last week, and we talked about deferring a PCI study to generate $200,000 of that internally at Public Works. As I understand it, it's $250,000 that ACTC committed towards this, is that correct?
There is a 200, well, we received $200,000 through the response and relief program.
Okay, so 200.
Yeah.
So 200 there, so that gives us 400. We have.
That's already figured into the calculation.
That's figured into the.
Oh, that's already in there, okay.
So, no, I was talking to John Geddy of ACTC, and he has an opinion there, if, now it would depend what the ACTC Board did, he thought there would be adequate funding from the RSTP dollars to basically fund that 600,000.
Maybe.
Maybe.
The problem is, the ACTC Board agreed already to, to push extra dollars in the Pine Grove. Depends on the mood of the Board, whether they'd be receptive to that.
Well, in the meantime, we've got the federal grant, LATCF grant, which is basically revenue sharing grant that we've, we've got. It's $144,000, basically. We can put that towards it and then cover the remainder out of the, our reserves, the payroll reserve we set aside, that it doesn't look like we're going to need to touch just yet. That would be about another 200 there. So if any of, any excess funds come in from ACTC, they'd offset the general fund contribution. But that's the way I'd like to set things up.
A payroll reserve just under a million?
Yes.
So we wouldn't wipe it out, is what.
No, and now there would still be plenty left there.
Yeah, no, I, that sounds like a doable option, and, and I'd hope ACTC would see fit to, to do it. There's, there's, it's a pretty important project out there, and plus, I mean, our, our Rosenee just, Rosenee a lot of money.
Could we rename it a Shenandoah Beautification Project? ACTC seems like that word.
Okay, anything for the public? Anybody off of Zoom? Okay.
One other comment before we.
Yes.
Isn't the secondary bid some of the worst parts of that road?
I'm trying that one, Rich.
The.
Fire member, right, just up from where we were going to stop, is some of the worst parts?
No, I think the worst parts are.
Are down lower?
Are with, with our base bid limits.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say the lower parts probably were, probably worse.
Okay, well, again, I'm going to bring it back to the board for a motion.
Well, I'd make a motion to accept the recommendations and also include the alternate in that, too.
Second.
Under the question.
Yes.
We're taking the base bid then, under the motion, plus the bid alternate, correct?
Correct.
Without knowing how we're going to fund it.
Oh, with Chuck.
We can, yeah, we can fund it the way I, I suggested, and then if ACTC puts in more money, then we will reduce the general fund contribution.
If ACTC does.
If they do, if they don't, then we're taking it out of, out of that secondary reserve.
We're getting this project going because it's a time-sensitive thing.
I understand, but, you know, it's an important road, but all of us have important roads, too.
Yeah.
And you're putting another 600,000 into the alternate. Five, what is it, 500,000 into the alternate, the base?
590, 580 or something, 500.
Yeah, so about six, about six, so.
Six and rounding.
600,000.
There.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, Richard. I mean, we've got a, we've got a major road problem in this county.
I don't think any public hearing we have is going to fix that. I mean, Mr. May's not here for this discussion. Money in the roads.
I understand.
This is where the public hearing is.
This is a bird in the hand concept, though. This one's ready to go.
I agree, and the one thing I was very happy to see is the, the Veer Camp bid, and then George Reed also had a very close bid, so two of our local companies that were.
Within 20,000 or so.
Yeah, about 10,000 was the difference in those base bids.
Here's two companies that were trying to help the county to a, to a point, because the other bids were like, whoa.
Yeah, no, you get, you get that kind of money and coming that close in the bids, it shows they were probably sharpening their pencil pretty hard.
Yeah. Before we vote, one question, Richard, is you don't address, do you put 10% aside for, for any contingency on this?
No, actually, the numbers are the bid numbers themselves, so if there's, if the Board would like to see a contingency, which would be nice, that would be in addition.
So how are you going to pay for any change orders that come up? There's always change orders.
Yeah, that's, that's true, that's a good. Yeah, that's, that's true. That's a good point. You know, if everything runs smoothly, great. But yeah, there's always, something always pops up. So, no, that's, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, that's something I was going to bring up is that, you know, if there's, and I don't know if 10% is a good number to set aside or would certainly help.
I thought it was a good point, but I never got an answer though. So as to how you're going to cover any change orders. Go back to the general fund, I guess, to-
Not plow as many of my snow roads.
There goes that balanced budget, huh?
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll give an aye, but we got to sharpen our pencils.
That creates a different problem. Now we, I need four fifths in order to allocate the fund out of that.
He said aye.
Oh, that was, okay. I thought that was a nay.
He was a-
He was a delayed aye.
Aye.
He was leaning hard that one.
Unlike other board members, even when I have to swallow, swallow a sour pill, I swallow it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now on to Planning Department. Final determination, the board chair's approval of temporary waiver to allow Jackson Valley Quarry to operate outside their authorized hours, days of operation during an emergency, allowing the quarry's use condition approval.
Good morning. Good morning. Chuck Beatty, Planning Department. The continued storms has once again required a request to be submitted to Jackson Valley Quarry for them to operate beyond their normal operating hours of Monday through Friday from six to six. This request was remade, excuse me, was made on by Sacramento Metropolitan Utilities District, and they requested that the quarry remain open outside their normal operating hours from March 17th and 18th. And Chairman Brown approved that request. And it's before the board for your final determination.
Anything out to the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, back to the board.
Well, it seems like it's, makes sense. I don't have any problem with it. But I guess it's kind of after, after the, after the cows are out of the cradle, huh?
I don't operate this, but-
What are we gonna do if it dies for lack of a second? I'd like to-
Well, anyway, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the board chair's temporary waiver allowing Jackson Valley Quarry to operate. So they're proved hours.
Okay.
And I'm swallowing a sour pill, but I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
If it's any consolation, I think they're going to be back to us pretty quick to try and firm up this approval process.
I agree.
It's coming back.
Who's that?
George Reed.
George Reed.
Oh, yeah.
They've been doing some definite work out there trying to help out sound and other stuff. So we'll see where it goes. Okay, five I. Planning Department. Discussion of possible action regarding the environmental document for Pacific Gas Electric of R-1408 Pipeline Replacement Project.
So PG&E has a underground gas line that runs along Buena Vista Road from Jackson Valley down towards Coal Mine Road. There is an exposed section of that that crosses Jackson Creek where our bridge crosses Jackson Creek. So to eliminate the inherent problems with having that exposed section crossing the creek, they plan on putting about 950 feet of that line underground, or the section that crosses the creek underground. But in order to do so, they've got to go back about 500 feet each side of the stream and horizontally drill it down 27 feet under the stream bed in order to make that connection to avoid the, to avoid the stream bed itself. The, the section that's exposed is going to be removed. The portion that's currently underground that will be retired in place in slurry fields, so, excuse me, it won't be taken out of the ground. This project requires the county to, to issue a revocable license for PG&E to use three parcels of land that we own adjacent to the bridge. These are kind of leftover parcels from when the bridge was replaced several years ago. And that's why we ended up being the lead agency for the environmental review rather than Public Utilities Commission or someone else. So the, an initial study was prepared for the project. It was circulated to state tribal and, and local agencies for their review and comment. We got comments from Buena Vista Tribe, CHP, Caltrans, Fish and Wildlife, and the Water Board. And those comments recommended mitigation measures have been put into the mitigation plan for the project. Buena Vista's going to have onsite tribal monitors during, during construction phase, and that's the most significant of the mitigation measures. The action before, requested action before the board is for you to approve the mitigated negative declaration for the project as the appropriate environmental document. And there are representatives from PG&E here if you have any questions specifically about the project or the mitigation measure.
Okay.
You know, I had, I had one, why 27 feet under the stream bed? That's, that's a long ways.
I had that same question. Why 25 or not 30?
The guy can answer. That's headed our way.
Morning, gentlemen. Thank you. So the 27 feet was, is based on-
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sean Poirier, PG&E, the land planner. So the 27 feet was based on, we did a geotechnical boring investigation out there years and years ago. And based on that depth, it's select on the soil layers that's conducive for the drilling. So ideally, you want to drill, when you do the horizontal directional drilling, you want to go through lower, through the layers that are not porous, not like rock where you lose the pressure. So that's based on the, the-
That makes sense, then.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody?
I've got one more question.
Oh.
Is drilling, is that more, is that cheaper? Is there too much infrastructure? Why don't you just go through there and bear it eight, 10 feet with an excavator?
Yeah, so generally, it actually, sometimes when it depends on, you know, as you go up through that creek, it's pretty steep. The amount of material that we would have to excavate would be pretty substantial, especially on the north side of, I believe it's Buena Vista Road right there. It's pretty steep and it would be pretty impactful, especially to the property owners. And they also, the reason why we do these HDDs sometimes, that's the, the short term is to, so that it doesn't become exposed in the future, right? So, you know, the deeper it can go, you know, the less of terms of exposures, especially even with eight to 10 feet. There was a lot of incision and scouring in that creek specifically. So the idea would be to avoid a future, you know, so I don't have to go back out there and re-impact everything. And we do do this a lot of time for our gas line infrastructure when it comes to crossing creeks, rivers, waterways and such.
I will say, I think, looking at what you have to sequence a lot of the mitigation measures, not just PG&E's projects, but their projects throughout the state, it's got to run the costs out of sight. Oh, the biological, relooking this, the biological that, and the frogs and the fencing, the frogs can't, frogs and the salamanders can't get in the open holes. It's, it's absolutely stupid. I don't blame you for it, but what the state's put in place is just nuts. And people wonder why energy costs are high and other costs are high. That's part of it. So.
Okay, call for a motion?
One more question. The, the pipeline that you're removing-
Yes, sir.
Is what's considered hazardous waste there? Is it because the pipe's been used for gas?
Are you referring to the reason why we're removing it?
No, just, I thought I had read in your, in the environmental document that there was hazardous materials.
I thought they're filling a pipeline that's left.
Yeah, so, so what we're planning to do is part of what we do in our procedures is so before we take an existing line out of service, right, is we typically will, we cut it open, right, and we take a scrape sample inside, and then we send that to the lab. And if it comes back hazardous by law, we are required to clean it, which is kind of a fancy way of putting like this little pig that basically just shoves his way through, cleans out all the contaminants and all the, you know, nasty liquids. And once that's been done, then we can go ahead and say the line is clean. And then we would be able to go ahead and pump it full of slurry, cut and cap it.
Got it. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
But the part within the creek would be completely removed in its entirety. And then once we get to five feet of cover on each side of the river, on the creek bank, then it would be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
In for, looking for a motion?
I move that the board adopt the mitigated negative, negative declaration as adequately identifying and mitigating the project's impacts.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Four zero one.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Five J. Administrative Agency. Discussion of possible action relative approval of the chairman's signature on a letter to Cal Fire and the Office of State Fire Marshal regarding the changes to the fire hazard severity zones.
Jennifer, is John Heisenbittel on?
I saw him earlier.
I'll lead. I asked chairman if I could put this letter together because you, you can read the letter and see it for yourself. I, I think their process was flawed that they used. The reasoning, I get it. They have to go by the administrative law process. But it's just a horrible way to do a public process. Other donors gone through the counties and checking it off. We did Amador, we did Eldorado, we did Sacramento. I put a lot of fire in here, but I used some language that John Heisenbittel provided earlier when I asked him for input. So thought it was very common sense language. I would just like to make a couple minor grammatical corrections to this letter before, before we send it off. And I'd also like on the CC, to CC CSAC, RCRC, our state senator and state assembly woman on this. And I don't know, maybe the board thinks the flavor of it is too much, but.
Need to get some attention. I agree with you in that aspect. Anything for the other board members?
Oh, it seems fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Heisenbittel is available if you have any questions for him.
What did you think of the letter, Mr. Heisenbittel?
Substance was fine. Like, like Supervisor Forester said, it's, it's a little fiery, but substantively, it's, it's, it's correct. The process is, is balled up. And the, the model itself, I, I have a real concern about as a professional forester. I, I don't think a lot of the down country should be identified as extreme fire hazards. And, and as I think it points out in the letter, that may be a result of some of the, some of the fires they had in the, in the Santa Rosa area. It, it made modelers more sensitive, probably oversensitive. But overall, I thought the letter was good.
I thank you.
John's input was invaluable on, like the language on the Santa Rosa area, over hazarding. I've never heard that term before. So, and then on the back page, the difference between hazard and risk for insurance companies. John's input was invaluable on this.
Okay. Anybody else on the public or Zoom? Okay. Back to the board for a motion?
Make a motion. We send the letter under the chairman's signature with, with a couple minor correction, with those grammatical errors handled. I'll second.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four zero one. And our last item is five K. Review and possible approval of the March 14th Board Supervisor Meeting Minutes and the March 21st Board Supervisor Special Meeting Minutes.
I'd move approval of both sets of minutes with one, one minor correction on the regular minutes of March 14th.
Second.
Very minor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Four zero one again. And this concludes the meeting. Thank you.